All right, good evening, everyone. I have 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the Seidra Woolley Council Meeting to order. Tonight is September the fourteenth. It is our last official council meeting of the year. So, I think we're all rather excited about that. I hope you'll all join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Real quick roll call, Councilman Owen?
I'm present.
Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Thank you, all in attendance. All right, on to item number D, approval of the agenda. And I am requesting that we move number, item number one, from the new business, which is Paula Kelly's resolution, to be brought under the presentation. So, when you make the motion, will you please include that?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So, I have a motion by Councilman Owen, second by Councilman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carries. Consent agenda, items one through eleven. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, if I may, just ask a question on that one. There's a couple of first reads in there. I know that there are things we discussed a little bit before, items five and seven. But their first reads, don't we normally do a second read on, if we're doing a pass on consent agenda?
Yeah, so the council has the option, if they'd like, to pass it now, or we can pull it off and we can have discussion on that under new business. What would you, what would be your preference?
It'd be nice to pull it and then have a discussion on it.
Okay, so, I'm looking for a motion, then, that will approve consent agenda polling items five and seven, items five and seven, from the consent agenda, and placing them under new business. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, so let me make a note of that. All right, thank you. So, moving on to, we have three presentations tonight, three wonderful presentations. And as I requested, we will begin with the first one, which is actually a resolution. And this resolution is for somebody that we love and greatly respect. She has been somebody who has given, dedicated her life, really, to the community. And so, we have a resolution for you, Paula. I'm going to read it, and then I'll come down and present it to you. So, council members, you've had a chance to take a look at item number one. It is a resolution 1103-22 honoring Seidra Woolley Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Paula Kelly. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So, I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, second by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carries. Paula?
Can I just bring it to you, Paula? If you just want to say, "See you"?
No, I'll stand up.
Okay, all right. We'll just keep you right where you were at, all right?
Okay.
So, I'm going to read this resolution. Oh, thank you, yes.
There it is, I think. Y'all can hear me? Perfect, perfect. So, Paula, this is a resolution, and it's just for you. It's a resolution of the City of Seidra Woolley honoring you as our Seidra Woolley Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Whereas, while born in Pocatello, Idaho, Paula was raised in Seidra Woolley, growing up on Janiki Road and attending Seidra Woolley schools, graduating in 1968. And whereas she graduated from Gonzaga University in 1990 with a degree in communication and political science, and, no wonder you were interested in the council, huh? And whereas shortly after, Paula returned to the Skagit Valley roots. And whereas Paula's children, grandchildren, and now great-grandchildren attend Seidra Woolley schools. And whereas she graduated from Leadership Skagit in 2011. And whereas Paula served on the Peace Health Community Health Board from 2013 to 2019. And on the Cascade Loop Association Board, the Boys and Girls Club Board, and as Grand Marshal of the Fourth of July Parade. And she has sat on the Seidra Woolley Rise Board. She's also been Grand Marshal of the 2021 Lighted Christmas Parade, and on the City Council, which I had the honor of serving with her on 2018 to 2019. Whereas she has also been active in the Seidra Woolley business, Seidra Woolley Woman Business, in Seidra Woolley Rotary Club, and the Seidra Woolley High School CTE Advisory Committee, and with the League of Women Voters. And whereas Paula operated Paula Kelly Insurance Agency from 1999 to 2011. And whereas she served as Executive Director for the City of Seidra Woolley, as the Chamber of Commerce, at the Chamber of Commerce for the past thirteen years. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the City Council and the City of Seidra Woolley, and as follows. The City of Seidra Woolley thanks Paula Kelly for her lifetime of service to the community that has left the community far better than she found it, passed and adopted by the City Council for her lifetime achievement, service to the community. And we send all our thanks to you, Paula. Thank you very much. Signed, and I signed it, Mayor Julia Johnson. And we're going to have you. And Paula, I can say, we could have said a whole lot more. We really could have, but we only had one sheet of paper that we could put it on to, so. Would you like to say a few words?
You know, this has been an amazing thirteen years. And I have a great follower in Monique Brigham. And I see my cousin, Mike, and Lisa here as well. And, you know, my granddaughter is here with me. She helped me get in. And I have great-grandkids here, Sienna and Gwendolyn. And I really appreciate all of you for being here. I see the Moody's. And, you know, thank you all so much. I appreciate you all. Jason, you've been a great help in forming my, well, we did some things together, didn't we? Yes. And Jason was mayor of concrete for a long time, but he recently decided to step down. And Nathan, Nathan, you are a godsend to this community. I can't tell you how many times, just calling you up and saying, "Nathan, I need your help," and there you were. So, thank you for that. And thank you all to the rest of the council. I really appreciate having been on that side of the stage as well, so. I have, I think Brendan and Chuck were on it with me. And so, thank you.
All right. And we'll get a copy of this to you. Standing ovation. All right. Okay, and then, we do have two more presentations. And if I could get Carol to come forward? I would also like Chief Wagner and also Kelly to come forward. So, we have been really blessed here in Seidra Woolley to have some great employees. And I am going to turn this over, actually, to Chief Wagner and also to Kelly, because I know that they have worked with you directly. I've had the honor of experiencing your kind spirit, you know, your willingness to participate. You cover for us when we need it. You've been exceptional. So, I'll have them speak, and then I'll present the award.
Well, I've had the gracious opportunity to be able to work with you for many, many years, Carol. And as you follow Ms. Paula, and talking about Nathan, we have a lot of people in this community and work for this city that always step up and wear many hats, do a lot of things, and do great things for the community. We've only got to have you for the city for four years, but truly, we used you even before that. When we started the ambulance transition, we used you as a biller for a couple of years before that. And a lot of us have worked with you for two decades. So, the ripple effects and the positive things you've done for this community. You're the subject matter expert in pretty much everything we do in ambulance side. Your attitude, your positive willingness to train all of our new people, whether it's HIPAA compliance, it's getting our young kids ready to do the report writing and stuff, and kind of being the mom of shaking your finger and get them pointing in the right direction and get them ready to move on to bigger and better things. We were hoping we could have you for a couple of years, which you told us you'd give us a couple of years. You gave us four. I think Ed's ready to move on and start doing some traveling and stuff. And we want to congratulate you on that. But we're going to miss you. We're going to miss your smile. We're going to miss your positive attitude. And all of our folks back there, I think, are going to miss you. It's hard to have somebody where we used to say, "You're doing the walk of shame to go see Carol to get your things correct." But I think each and every one of them are going to miss that, because at the end of that corridor is you, and that smile, and that embrace, and you're just amazing lady.
I've only worked with Carol for seven months now, but just in addition to that credible knowledge base and experience you bring to EMS billing and the great work, you're a really essential part of finance and do a lot of finance functions. And when the time calls, and it often does, you're always willing, able to step in every position, like Frank said, and help out however you can. So, we're going to greatly miss you, although we know you're not too far away. We're going to greatly miss you. We may bombard you on Friday at Lorenzo's or sneak in there with you. So, we're going to miss, we're going to miss you a lot. And thank you so much for your service.
And of course, we couldn't fit all that onto a plaque. So, it was better that I had them come up and share that. And I know that your staff that you work with, the women that you work with, they would have plenty of other things to share that's really glorious, and it would all be true. Would all be true. So, Carol, this is for you. It says, "Carol Nipper, EMS Building and Compliance Finance Clerk, City of Seidra Woolley, January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2022. In grateful appreciation for your dedication, commitment to excellence, and your warm and gracious heart, though your time with us was short, you will be missed. With appreciation and respect from all of us, Mayor Julia Johnson." Thank you, Carol. All right, if we could have Jeff Moody up here. Also Nathan. And Mr. Freiberger wished that he could be here. He couldn't be here tonight, but. I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. So, again, I think that the experts who actually have worked with Jeff can share, really adequately, all that he has given to the city.
Yeah, so, I've had the good fortune of being Jeff's last supervisor here at the city for about the last ten years. So, Jeff's one of the good ones. He just does a fantastic job out there for the community in a time where it's, where, you know, we're seeing folks at their, not their best point, I guess. So, I just have a couple of interesting facts. I'm a numbers guy, so. And these numbers aren't exact, but, so Jeff's been at the cemetery for the last twenty-three years. There's about nine thousand headstones at the cemetery. And in the summer, we try to weed eat them about every other week. So, in his career, he's weeded around one hundred and eight thousand headstones. And the cemetery is about forty-two acres, and it's mowed weekly in the spring, summer, and fall. So, I estimate that we mow it about twenty-eight times a year. So, if you add all that, all that up, Jeff's mowed about twenty-seven thousand acres in his career, which means he's mowed an area the size of our entire city limits about ten times. So, every square inch, buildings, roads, so. And lastly, we do, on average, about fifty services per year. So, that means he's helped approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty citizens with their final arrangements, so. But he's done good work. He's made life easier for me instead of harder. And I've had some that have made it harder, so. I appreciate him. I'm going to miss him, so. You want to say anything?
No, just thanks. Thanks to the City of Seidra Woolley. Had a good run. Went by quick, than you would think. I mean, thirty-five years, but it went by faster than you would think, I guess.
Well, I think Nathan said it, I think quite well. We really appreciate the service and the dedication that you have given the city. And I personally have had the experience where, in burying a loved one, you have been there. And Jeff, you know, you just have a way about you that's easy and comforting, and that's a gift. And so, you know, people may think that it is just mowing and weeding and putting up headstones and tombstones, whatever. But really, that is a part of it. But it's how you interact with the individuals who are at a moment of great pain and loss. And you did a beautiful job of that. And I hope, I hope you always know that. That was really, it was lovely.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
So, I'm going to read the plaque. I'll just read the plaque. And it says, "Jeff Moody, Cemetery Lead and Operator." And one thing that I didn't mention, too, is that you actually were the manager, weren't you, of Solid Ways for a while? You did?
Ten years.
Yeah, for ten years. So, I apologize that that didn't get on here, so. Because that's excellent. From May 7th, eighty-seven, to December 31st, 2022. So, almost there. Union Cemetery, City of Seidra Woolley. In grateful appreciation for thirty-five years of distinguished service, dedication, and commitment to excellence, you've gone above and beyond serving those whose families and friends are honored and remembered in Union Cemetery with gratitude and respect. City of Seidra Woolley, Mayor Julia Johnson.
Thank you very much.
That's always a lovely way to end the last meeting of the year. And I want to thank all of you who came tonight to show your respect and your appreciation for Paula Jaff and for Carol. These are really good people. And Seidra Woolley has been very, very fortunate to have them here. And I think they are a good example of the kinds of employees that we do have here. Lots of longevity in a lot of our employees. And I think that speaks highly to their interaction with one another and just their commitment to you, the citizens of Seidra Woolley. All right, thank you. We don't expect everybody to have to stay. If you want to go, please feel free to go. I want to give you permission to do that, if you'd like to do that. All right, moving on then to staff reports. So, Mr. Bush?
Yes, no report this evening?
All right, thank you. And then moving on to council reports. And I'll begin with you, Councilman Owen? Council report?
Oh, I don't, I don't, oh, I did. I did have a chance to go up to the museum Saturday, and Santa Claus was up there. Of course, I wanted to see him. But it was really nice, and they had a nice turnout. And I'm happy to see the museum come to life. It's just a, it's just a different place now. And I have to give a certain individual credit for that. And that's Joe Ellen. And she's doing a fantastic job, and I hope she don't let down. I know when I am through with my job here, I'll probably volunteer for it. We'll see if we can get rid of some mannequins or something.
She'll see what she can do about that. All right, thank you, Chuck. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you. Just one item this evening. I wanted to thank the Skagit County and our staff for completing the crossing on Cook Road to Janiki Fields. I'm excited to see that being used this summertime and keeping everybody safe.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. I also had some, a few comments about the crossing, and people are very excited to have that. That's a wonderful addition to the city and the safety of our community and the people passing through. Also, we had a wonderful Christmas parade in town that went over really well. A lot of very happy people, people coming into the town, admiring the tree, admiring the town, and the parade. So, I want to say thank you to the people that helped put that on between Chamber, a lot of the volunteers. And it just says a lot about our community and the people willing to step up and chip in. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Well, by the time it gets to me, I start feeling like an echo. But I'll just start at the beginning and say, "Joe Ellen, great work with the museum. The parade was fantastic. That was awesome, seeing so many people turn out. And grateful to see the crosswalk is complete. Thanks to the county for getting that done. Otherwise, everybody have a Merry Christmas and be safe."
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
I just wanted to tell Chief Wagner that this week I had my own experience calling 911 for a neighbor. And your staff came, and they were exceptional. And I just wanted to extend my thank you to them and their amazing service, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Not much tonight, just Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. And hopefully, we won't meet again this year.
Let's hope so. Got to get the business center if we're going to make that happen. All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, the Parks and Rec Committee will be moving into another committee. Obviously, the Parks and Recs are really important to our community. We see that a lot in the amazing things we're doing in the parks. And I just wanted to extend a special thank you to Nate for all your support with the parks and always being there. And I know that we'll see the skate park moving forward with the competition, working with Amanda and whatnot. They're excited about that. And there's just a lot of exciting things, and you're very responsive. So, thank you very much for everything you do for this community when it comes to parks and all you do. As far as that, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas and have a very safe holiday, for sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, something I was remiss in mentioning, and I wish I had when Paula was here, but there is going to be a retirement celebration for her at the Chamber this Friday, two nights from now, at 4:00 PM. And they'll have small bites and refreshments there. So, if you'd like to pop in and congratulate Paula once again, you will have that opportunity to do that. So, please give that consideration. I wanted to point out something that I thought was really quite impressive, especially for the council members. So, as you know, our Public Works Director, Mark Freiberger, puts in a lot of work getting grants so that we can have streets and other projects done. And something that he pointed out to us in the senior management team was that through the Transportation Improvement Board, which is a board, it's through Skagit Council of Governments, it's a board that I and other mayors have sat on and I currently sit on. But over the last ten years, we have received, from 2012 to 2023, almost nineteen thousand dollars in grants. So, that's very impressive, what he has done, what we have received. And very grateful to the projects that we've been able to accomplish because of that. I also wanted to make everybody aware, if they are not aware, that Pioneer Center North, which is located up at the Swift Center, for those of you who may not know, will be closing at the end of January. They have been serving people across the state of Washington since 1978. Sad to say goodbye to them, they're a legacy. And we want to recognize the amazing work that they have done, not only for the different communities across the state, but also for the individuals who attended there to receive treatment. And then one last note, and I did share this with our staff, but I'm going to share it with you as well, is that we received an invitation from the Park Ranger Law Enforcement Academy at Skagit Valley College. They've extended an invitation to us. And it is for the graduation of the Parks Law Enforcement soon-to-be officers. And I bring this up because a few of our officers have actually been involved in teaching some of the classes there at Skagit Valley College. So, and I believe, I believe, Chief McElwath, haven't you taught a class there, too?
I actually have not.
Oh, you haven't, okay.
But we have a few officers that have, yes.
Anyway, so for those of you who would like to go, that is actually happening this Saturday at the Philip Terry Theater, 1:00 PM. So, if you'd like more information, I have it here. And so, and then to the public, I just want to say, I hope that you have a wonderful Christmas, or Kwanzaa Day, or Happy Hanukkah, whatever you're celebrating. I hope that it's a safe and wonderful holiday. We look forward to seeing you back, hopefully, all of you, in January, right? You'll be back to visit us? Okay, moving on, we now have public comments. So, it is 6:26 at this point. And anybody who would like to come forward for public comment, please give your name and address. And if you can keep it two, three minutes, that would be appreciated. So, anybody here for public comment? Okay. And I'm going to look online. Is there anybody online? I haven't seen any hands go up. Is there anybody online who would like to make public comment? If so, please raise your hand or turn your mic off. Or I should say, on. Okay. Not seeing any there. I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move right into a public hearing. This is for the Hopkey Salt Annexation Request, Resolution 1112-22, and action is requested. So, I'm going to begin with, this is, let's see, this will be John. And he's right there in front of me.
All right. Waiting to make sure this thing is on. Looks like I have told it. Can you hear me? I don't really hear anything here. So, I'll try to speak loud. Thank you, council. So, tonight, we're having a public hearing on a proposed annexation of about seventeen and a half acres of property in the southeastern portion of the city, south of Railroad, which is Railroad Avenue, and east of Fruitdale Road. There is a map on page 161 of your packet that shows the area and the parcels involved. So, before getting into the details, I just want to explain that the property itself is three tax parcels and one piece of unopened right-of-way, and then any right-of-way on Hoenn Road and Railroad in between the existing city limits. So, it's just adding to that southeast corner of the city is the proposal. We received an annexation, an intent to annexation notice from Virginia Salt and We received an annexation, an intent to annexation notice from Virginia Salt and the Hopkey family. They're owners of two of the parcels involved that make up 15 acres of this property. Back on August 24th, the City Council had a meeting with those annexation initiators and gave the initiators the okay to go ahead and submit an actual annexation petition to annex the city formally to come into city limits. It's a multi-step process, as I'll try to describe through here, and this is just one of the many steps of the annexation process. After the council had that meeting, they requested that not only, not only did they give the go-ahead for the annexation petition to go forward, they requested that one piece of property and a piece of unopened property in between the annexation area and the existing city boundaries also be incorporated. That piece of property is vacant, and it's 1.45 acres, and then that unopened right-of-way is about .5 acres of property. And when the petition was submitted, it did include all of the three parcels that the City Council had wanted to see to make sure that it's a logical boundary is the primary reason that we wanted to include that additional parcel. But there's other reasons too, and I'll talk about the whole reason that we annex in the first place is, under Growth Management Act, the city plans for 20 years' worth of projected population growth. By doing so, we analyze how much land we have, how much land we're going to need to accommodate 20 years' worth of growth, and then we design our urban growth area boundaries so that we can accommodate that 20 years' growth with the assumption that the property in our urban growth area is going to annex into the city, and as people build and develop, there's place for them to do so. You know, obviously, the older parts of the city and the core of the city is mostly built out, so in order for us to accommodate new growth, we have to add new land to the city. And the annexation process is the way that we do this. In Washington State, the property owners are the ones that initiate an annexation request. Cities don't just say, okay, we need additional land to accommodate growth at this point, so we're going to go out and annex property. That's not how it works. It's driven by the people that live adjacent to the city within the urban growth area make a request to the city, and that is what's happened. So it's important that we do annex property as part of this process, because as I explained, if we want to accommodate the growth that we know is happening, we need to annex additional land, or it puts more pressure on the areas inside of the city that are currently already part of the city, and then we see more growth focused in the town and may not be able to accommodate the growth that we see. So adding additional land is really the ultimate, final step in our urban growth area planning. Like, how are we going to accommodate growth? Well, this is how the city has determined we're going to grow. Any land in our urban growth area, we've shown through our comprehensive plan and numerous studies adjacent to the comprehensive plan, show that we can accommodate future development in this area. So that means we know how we're going to provide traffic infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. We've worked with the Skagit PUD water provider, and they know that they can provide services to this area. So if land is included in our urban growth area, we've already gone, done through all the hard work of saying, of determining whether or not it can be developed. So this property, we can serve, the city does have a plan for, or already has capacity to accommodate growth in this area. That being said, I'll get back to the process. So when we received this annexation petition, we did request that one piece of property be included in to make the logical boundary. That, as I mentioned, is 1.45 acres. That is owned by the parent family. In your packet, there is comments from the parent family, so I wanted to be clear about, you know, what's going on, and I'm sure they're in the audience here, and will probably like to speak during this also. The process, like I said, we've already had the annexation initiation meeting. Council's already authorized the petition. The petition's been submitted. The next step would be for, if the City Council wants to see this property annexed into the city limits, what you would do is pass the resolution that is attached to the memo. I believe it's somewhere around page 168 or so of your packet, or maybe 165 or so. And if the council passes that resolution, what you're then doing is saying, okay, Planning Department, continue your work. The next step is that we would send it to the Boundary Review Board, and the Boundary Review Board would have a chance to review this. And then after the Boundary Review Board decides that they're satisfied with that this annexation meets all of the requirements for an annexation, which we fill out probably about 30 pages worth of documentation and maps to send to them to show that it does, and we're prepared to do so. After that step, then the Boundary Review Board will send it back to the city, at which point we will have the option to pass an ordinance actually enacting the annexation. So tonight's resolution doesn't make the annexation actually happen, it's just another step in the process, but it's an important step, because if we say yes to this resolution, we're for all intents and purposes saying yes, we will pass an ordinance in the future should it make it through the Boundary Review Board process. I hope that satisfactorily explains what we're trying to do here today. If you have any additional questions about process, I'm happy to answer them, and...
Actually, they'll have a chance to do that after we hear from the public.
And I was going to say that I'd like to open it up to the public for their comments, for you to hear, and then we'll pass it back to the council. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the public hearing unless the council has any process questions.
Yeah, I will open the public hearing right now to hear from the public. Anybody who would like to make comment, again, your name and address, and try to keep it two, three minutes. So is there anybody here who would like to speak to this?
We have a slide up.
I don't have it in front of me, so...
Since I'm standing up here, I'll go ahead. I'm number three on the list.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead. You are?
I'm Larry Lowe. I live at 10423 Fruitdale Road, almost to the river. I'm against this whole annexation thing, and I'll try to be more brief than your Planning Commission guy was. I'm not questioning can you do this, I'm questioning should you do this? The first thing when I read this brought into mind two things. One is the Kent Valley, and the other one is Sultan, Washington. If you've been to Sultan lately, you'll see what a mess the roads are. Sultan grew exponentially with no planning on infrastructure to how to get the people in and out to go to work, the tourists coming through, and then they have a real problem. And the state's been studying this for several years, trying to fix Highway 2, and nobody's come up with a real solution yet. I've been living here 28 years on that farm down there, and I watched the town grow. And approximately 20 years ago, I came to a planning meeting which was held in the library, I think, no, somewhere in town, and the mayor then, her point was that if we're not growing, we're dying. Well, I think we're going to grow to death. This whole annexation thing probably did not start with the Salts or the Hopkins. I don't know them personally, although I pass by their house every day. There's more to this scenario than what the Planning Commission gave here. He's talking about government actions. When the Growth Management Act started in 1990, I think it was, the state did some good things. They laid out land use, what's going to be here, what's going to be here, what are we going to save, what are we going to keep, and how to do it, okay? One of them was agricultural and natural resources land. Since I own a farm and derive most of my living from that farm, I'm particularly interested in ag land. If you look at the 17 and a half acres here that's proposed to be annexed, there's probably, if you really want to count it, maybe 12, 10 to 12 acres of flat land. Developers love farmland, because they don't have to dig up trees, the dirt's pliable, they can dig right down and put their utilities in the ground. So I think, let me back up a little bit. When the Growth Management Act came out, they told the cities and the counties, here's what you have to do on your comprehensive plan and so forth. You laid out your boundaries, what the cities was, you laid out the urban growth areas, and I had some other neighbors down here told me years ago that they had the opportunity to put their farm in the urban growth area, and they decided not to. And he kicked himself every day that he didn't do it, because he could have had houses built up there, just like they're built up here on the golf course. And of course, he's passed away now, and his son sold the farm, and now they're building a lithium battery storage on it, so there goes the farmland anyway. So, back to this scenario, the Salts could have put theirs in the urban growth area years ago and decided for whatever reason not to, you know, and the city didn't bother to take it in. So now, somebody's out there with a big wad of money, saying, if you get the city to annex this in the urban growth area, then we'll give you a whole bunch of money, and we'll build all these houses on it. And I don't know about the city, but I know in the county it says, you know, up to 1/20 of an acre, you can put five houses on an acre. So if you look at that, at about 10 acres of buildable land, we're talking 50 houses on Railroad Avenue. Anybody here live on Railroad Avenue? How would you like it? All those cars coming by. And back to Sultan, if you drive through Cedar Woolley now compared to 28 years ago, you can barely get around, especially between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon. Highway 20 is packed, Cook Road is packed, even Francis Road and Highway 9 coming out of Clear Lake and Big Lake is packed. So only the locals know how to get around town, the newcomers don't yet. And the newcomers will be here if you let this go, because those guys who are going to buy the Salts land, they're going to build houses on it, and I don't want to see it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this? Let's see here. Yes, come on up.
My name is Terri Stewart. I'm at 10247 Fruitdale Road, and my grandparents live right, I would say, west of me, and they were farmers. They had strawberries and raspberries, and that's how they made a living, and that is good ag ground. What we're proposing to annex this is good ag ground that we can't, we can't give up this land. Besides, I don't feel like our schools, our hospitals, our roads, our firemen, our police, I don't think we are geared up to put 50 houses in there. I hope you council members will please consider this request to oppose this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stewart. I'm going to start from the top of the list and work the way down from those who haven't spoken yet. Philip Murray?
Philip Murray, 101 West Woodworth, Cedar. I don't like seeing farmland being built on, it's ridiculous, you can't ever replace it. But the other thing is Railroad Avenue is so narrow, has zero sidewalks, and if you build a bunch of houses, the taxpayers are going to be paying to have the roads rebuilt, sidewalks put in, so the kids can walk to school and ride their bikes, because right now, there's nothing going that direction to the schools downtown sidewalk-wise. And then septic systems, people are on septic systems out there. They will be required to have to pay to hook up to the sewer system, and if they don't do it, then later on, they sell, they have to hook up. It's a bunch of money out of their pockets, too. And I know if I owned that property, I would probably be doing the same thing, trying to sell it, make money. I grew up on Comano Island, in my great-grandparents' homestead in 1880s, when they settled. It was 20, what was left was 20 acres of waterfront. My mother just sold that, and it was all farmland to a relative so that no one would build on it, and it's hurtful. It would have been nice having a few more million dollars in the family, but it benefited everything out there on Comano. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Nick, is it Gochet?
Yeah, I just wanted to be on the record to oppose it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gochet. Bob Ruby?
Bob Ruby, 802 Metcalf, Cedar Woolley. I am an acquaintance of Virginia Salt. She's here, she can speak, I think she's on the list. A couple of comments that I would like to make, notwithstanding the remarks already made earlier. I'm in the business of property development, I think probably most or all of you would know that, and yes, I do do it for a profit, because I have to make a living, and I don't apologize about that. Now, the property is owned by the Salt family. Mr. Coleman has already pointed out, of the roughly 17 acres that are here, 15 of that, or over 90% of it, was requested by the families themselves. The other area is, as Mr. Coleman explained, was added into it. I use the word gerrymandering. John never has used that, but that's what I take it at, because it makes the boundaries more even. Virginia Salt and I have talked about this several times. As this process has been unfolding here, you may recall you saw this and approved moving ahead with it, going clear back to last summer. Predating that with the initial application, there was a significant, large review that was done as a standard procedure here, and Mr. Coleman, along with Engineering, Fire Department, Solid Waste, PUD was brought into it. All of those departments were consulted with regard to the feasibility of this and the difficulty that may have been posed with the city, with the services, the adequacy of service, and being able to respond with services. And all of those, there was nothing, I'm sure you got that report, that was, there was, for lack of a better phrase, no negative comments on that. I know Virginia Salt has told me this is what they would like to do with a family, as a family that's over 90%, i.e., urge this group to accommodate the wishes of the private property owners in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruby. And then Kurt Gochet?
I live at 10370 Fruitdale Road, and I guess maybe I've heard it's necessary for future growth. This is farmland, it's fairly close to us, and when I hear about, you know, it's necessary, questions come to me about the school system, who's, what's going to be done about the school system? We're growing so rapidly here. Also, I've lived in this valley for 68 and a half years, I'm not proud of that, but the water rights. You know, this is all about big money. This is about rich people getting richer, not necessarily the property owners, but it's more money coming into the city, and the city's going to get larger, and I understand that. And I've been to these meetings... And I've been to these meetings over the years, and it's probably already a done deal, as far as all of you are concerned. But I look at the people that live up in, in Hamilton, Birdsville, who've lost their water rights. They put their livelihoods, they've paid their taxes on all that, and that was taken from them. And you can say, well, it was because of this and it was because of that. Yet that same water runs down the Skagit River, is pumped up to the PUD, comes down the PUD, and is going to run down Fruitdale Road, and there's all you want. It's about our, it's about the river delta. Would you take a glass of water out of the river right there where they pump it up to PUD? I would. I wouldn't drink it out of the city sewer system down here, or a runoff off the city. Impervious surfaces. Farmland has all this impervious surface type of regulations we have to go for as farmers. And that impervious surface is being taken away from us all the time due to developments like this. Another thing, there's going to be, so speaking of impervious surfaces, this is going to include a lot of impervious, the farmland that's there now is all pervious. We're going to put a whole bunch of houses on there, we're going to put roads into it, there's going to be roofs, everything else. So where is that water going to go? Well, some of it's going to run down the hill there. And that water goes down to the river bottom, and that has to drain out down at the city down there. So whenever we have a flood, that water just sits in there until it goes out the city. Now Nathan's a great guy to work with. He really is. But people in the past haven't been. And we had big issues down there. And that needs to be, that is going to have to be maintained better or kept care of. And I, you know, that's something that might be over Nathan's pay grade. And traffic has been mentioned, crime has been an issue out of my place. We didn't have that years ago. Come from the city, guy was out there, don't have to go through it all, I can give you the sheriff's report. It's a concern. And when you say, we need more areas to grow, first thing comes to mind Vern Sims. That lot's sitting empty. How about Janicki's over there behind McDonald's? How many more skyscrapers we going to build in there? There's a lot of room in there. That's not farm ground. How about the old WRP mill over there? Some would say, well, that has been contaminated. But whose fault is that? Somebody let them do it. Somebody wasn't overseeing that. These are just questions that I have. And I think instead of just growing, 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 and thinking we're getting better, 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 we just need to look at that. I understand the place is going to grow, I understand it's going to change, it's all about change, but it's really about the dollar. It's all about the dollar. And I don't know the Salts, and I don't know the other people that own that property down there, and I understand their right to do that, but most likely, if it's like a lot of the places that I've heard here in town of places that are developable and whatnot, some organization, some agency has gone to them and said, hey, we, we will pay you this amount for that. You know? And you have to push through the paperwork, but it, the goal is down the road. And I don't hold that against those people. But is it fair to everybody else? Really, who's going to profit? Are the people with the big, with the big pockets around here? And it's just going to be millions. And it's sad to see our, our county going that way, our cities going that way. Because the people who've lived here their whole life, we deserve some rights, too. Not just for whatever. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gochet. So I do not have anybody else on the list, but I will open it up if there's somebody else who would like to make comment. I do not see anybody online as well, so I will close this. Please be sure to state your name and address. Thank you.
I am Virginia Salt, and I live on the property that we're discussing. And it's not in the floodplain. The floodplain is south of us. I've been connected with this property, actually, my great-grandparents bought this property, and it's been passed down through the family. And the area that we're talking about annexing has never flooded. We're above the, above the level. And as far as farming goes, on my brother's side, there's a little bit goes on over there. But my property, that is along Railroad Avenue, is, they come in maybe once a year and cut the grass, and they pay me nothing. And they don't want to bring in their big equipment. They say it's too difficult, so they don't want to farm it. And I would like very much to see it annexed and see some people who need housing get So I've been connected with Cedar Woolley for all my life. I have not lived right here all the way, but all my relatives have. And two of my relatives were the first two people in Cedar Woolley to own cars. Thought you might like to hear that. So I, as far as farmland goes, there's not much farming going on.
Thank you, Ms. Salt. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the comment, and I'm going to open this up to City Council for questions, answers, and after that, then a discussion. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I was just wondering, John, if the, if the parents' property, and from what I understood, if they don't want to have theirs included in the annex, it creates a bit of a hassle for property lines and being able to get within that, that city area. But if in time, they wanted to put that in, that's something that the city could do?
No.
No. So it's-
Not unless they were to ask, and then we would have to go through this process again.
Yeah. But if they were to ask, then, or, or a future owner, a family member, or something like that, if they wanted to, then?
Yeah, I think, you know, the likelihood would be lessened if they developed their property outside of city limits. This is, this would be the appropriate time to bring in that one point four or five acres to meet the, the intensive, the Growth Management Act and the Boundary Review Board will certainly look at it and have concerns if, if we jog around it.
All right. That would make sense. I, just on a quick note, had a, a friend of mine wanting to get his property into the Land Trust, and we worked very hard at getting that done. And he had passed just after that had happened, largest farm in Jimicum in Jefferson County, which was really awesome. But that was his wish. And I always feel that with people's property, it's their wish with their, with their families. That's kind of where I, where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavaca. Mr. Burns?
Thinking of next question, I just wanted to verify that the, the parents' property had changed hands in the last couple of years. Was this in the growth management area prior to that?
Yeah, so this entire area's been in the urban growth area for, I didn't go, it's been there as long as I've been in with the city for sixteen years. I'm presuming it would have been put in the nineties when we originally drew our urban growth area boundaries, but definitely more than sixteen years.
Okay. Judging from what I see on Railroad, that would be the natural progression for that land, for that space. I could see that being challenging to farm that small of a spot with the large equipment I see running down Cook Road. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a question for John.
Mr. Owen?
I'm familiar with that property because I've lived around here for eons. And that, well, the way the property lays, it, it kind of slopes down and, and then up, and there's a big swell at the bottom, and water sits in there quite often. And there's, the same thing runs up on the other side of the road. So if you put houses in there and all that blacktop and stuff, and you're going to have a tremendous amount of runoff, and, and what do you, what do you expect to do with that now? You're going to put in a, a draining system, or just let it go on down to the river?
So with all new development and city limits, we're required to address stormwater. The, the most current Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual requires that you detain the water that comes off of the site and either infiltrate it into the ground or hold it in, in a pond, you know, a typical stormwater pond like you see, until it does go into the ground. So like with any new development, stormwater runoff can't leave the site, so it'll be engineered so that any stormwater will stay on site and either infiltrate into the ground or overflow into a city system, depending on what city system and how it's designed. But it, it won't be designed to just run off, off to the neighbors' properties or just down to the south.
Yeah. Well, I've seen, I've seen a river come up awful close to that crest there and flood. It's never, I've never known it to flood over, but if you get a major flood, it will, it will go over that.
Well-
I mean, that's something to think about, too. It's pretty close to the river. I wouldn't want to build a house there.
All right. Yes, Councilwoman Kestie.
So I have a question. The people that are out there, they're on septic and wells. If this gets annexed in, will they have to hook up to our water and sewer, or will they be allowed to sell the houses on septic?
So homes on septic remain on septic until city sewer comes through the area and is within two hundred feet of the home. So in a situation like this where the annexation happens, there's no plan to bring sewer out. The city doesn't foot the bill for bringing city sewer out to this area. What would happen is when a developer, if it's in the city, if a developer chooses to, you know, subdivide the land, and that's any subdivision, you know, two lots, three lots, we would require them to connect that property to city sewer. Which means they would have to bring the infrastructure in from the city sewer to serve their property, you know, so run a sewer line down to, to their property. This property would require a pump station to, to serve it. And so any developer would have to build the pump station and build the sewer line back to our existing city sewer system to pump the sewer, to get the sewer into our city system. So until it's developed, nothing changes as far as sewer and water. Now, the city doesn't have water service, that's the Skagit County PUD, they provide water. And so, in the same case, in a subdivision, they would be required to bring water out to this property. And I apologize, I don't know if there's water running by the frontage of this property. I imagine there probably is. I think the areas, I think the, the PUD water is available, but if it wasn't, the developer would have to foot the bill of connecting, you know, bringing water out to that property. Properties that are within two hundred, homes that are within two hundred feet of the sewer, city sewer, and, and in the city limits, would be required to connect to sewer, or they could defer it until their septic fails, or until they, until they sell their property, at which time we would need to connect to city sewer. But that would be always down in the future, since the city's not planning on bringing any city sewer, it would be developed, it would be developer-driven. Same with, you know, they'd have to develop the city streets to city street width and curb gutter sidewalks and those sorts of things. So the same things that you would see in any subdivision and any land development within the city would occur there.
So they, they won't be on, they'll have to hook up to the city?
If they do a subdivision on, you know, the developer will have to, yeah. There's a handful of houses in the area east of there that are not on sup, that are not on sewer, but it's far fewer than I ever anticipated when we looked at the maps. I don't have those figures for you, though.
Councilman Allen, did you have a question?
If, if this was approved and it goes through, what would the density of homes be out in that area?
So the zoning designation that this would come in as is R5. So that's our residential five units per acre. It's, if they do a standard subdivision, they can get about four units per acre. They're eighty-four hundred square foot lots is the minimum lot size. If they do a planned residential development, they can actually get five units per acre, which we're guestimating, you know, ten to twelve acres of developable land. That would be, I don't have my phone on me, so I can't do math in my head, but, you know, fifty to, fifty to sixty homes on that property. You know, you still have to build roads and stormwater detention systems and whatnot, and, and recreation areas. So those numbers tend to come down a little bit from there, but that, that's ballpark.
All right. Mr. McGoffin, did you have a question?
In regards to like our strategic plan of growth, we're looking at these types of houses instead of doing the tall ones, from my understanding. And as growth goes, if we go south, there's not very many properties that we can go towards. Is that correct, with the floodplain?
So this would be about as far south as we could go. Right, you know, this property and the southern several hundred, you know, a couple hundred feet of it is the actual, you know, in Cedar, south of Cedar Woolley, there's that slope that goes down from where the main city is developed and then drops down to the area that we all know floods. And so there's a little bit of this down on that slope and just at the toe, that wouldn't be developed, that is in the floodplain. I don't believe that the property up above the slope is in the FEMA floodplain. We've heard testimony that it doesn't flood, and if it is in the floodplain, then it has to be built to FEMA standards for, you know, one foot, one to two feet above flood elevation so that any homes there would not get flooded. So there are, there are regulations in place that if there, if it is in the floodplain, which I don't believe it is, it would have to build so it wouldn't flood. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So not much, yeah, the city, most of the city's growth is planned to the north. This is kind of one of the last little pieces on the south edge of the city that would be eligible before you drop down into the, the real floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. So I am looking for a motion. Is the council ready to make a motion at this time?
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion, and your motion is?
Make a motion to pass Resolution 1112-22.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
Opposed.
Okay. So we have six, four, and one opposed, and the opposed is Councilwoman Kestie. Okay. All right, so that makes a motion. It has passed, Resolution 112-22, and it is a resolution stating the city's intent to annex approximately 17.5 acres of real property contingents on the southern part of the city and directing staff to forward required annexation materials to the Skagit County Boundary Board Review Board. All right. I would like to thank everybody for coming forth and giving testimony and sharing your opinion. I always appreciate when we have people who come forth and actually use this process. It's an important process, and I want to thank the council for a lot of thought. I know there's been a lot of thought that has gone into this, and you have read the materials extensively, so you were familiar with what was going on. All right, so that is that. Thank you. And this public hearing is now closed. Moving on to new business as requested by Councilman Lavaca. He asked that we pull off the consent agenda, items five and seven. So at this time, we will look at item five, which is the 2022 Budget Amendment, Ordinance 2030-22. And Kelly, thank you.
Good evening. So the Ordinance 2030-22, my apologies, that is a second read. There has been no changes from the prior council meeting on the budget amendment.
He did present on the seventh, so...
I just wanted to make a quick comment on those. So I had some questions that were... It's a first read. It's a budget amendment. Didn't quite understand, not from me, but didn't quite understand if it was something that we were just approving budgets, and I wanted to clarify on the record that we've read through these, and this one talking about ARPA funds, and then the other one, as far as seven, the master fee schedule, is not actually adding more fees to... We're not approving through a consent agenda to add more fees. This was discussed in the past, and it was part of the approval we did in a previous session. So that's what I just wanted to make clear to... And I've had that discussion, but just make clear throughout the council. So when that was read, it was something I wanted to make sure that people understood.
And let's not muddle the two, because actually, we've got them presented as two different items.
Perfect, let's do that.
Yes, so, okay. So are there any other comments or questions regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilwoman Kestie to adopt a salary schedule or the 2022 Budget Amendment, Ordinance 203022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. And then moving on to the Master Fee Schedule Update Resolution 111122. Is that you, Kelly?
That's also me. This is a first read and requesting action tonight as these fees have all go into effect January 1. As Councilman Lavaca stated, the majority of the fees updated in the master fee schedule were approved in November through ordinance regarding the utility billing rates. So those have already been discussed and approved. There's a couple of additional items in here as well. The transportation impact fees, these get updated annually through a professional consultant's report. That report is just a yearly update. And then the additional item is also the diesel fuel surcharge for garbage and recycling. We currently have a fuel charge and outlined items for potential increases in fuel. I believe previously, our surcharge only had a dollar amount up to five dollars, and just as a contingency, we added additional dollar amounts for six and seven dollars.
Okay. Any questions?
Kelly, so for the fuel charge, that would be in the case that fuel goes up to six, seven dollars. Then it's within that range, so we're not like capped off at five.
Correct.
That is correct. We're not adding additional fees on this.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I am looking for a motion for Resolution 111122. It's a resolution of the City of Sejowilly of Washington updating the master fee schedule in accordance with the updates to the Sejowilly utility rates and transportation impact fee. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 111122.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Opposed.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Owen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, Kelly. Motion carries. Thank you, council. All right, moving on to, it's actually item number two on our new business, and that is the Memorial Park Improvements Project Contract Award. Mr. Salsina?
Thank you again. So if you guys can refer to, I think it's page 185 in your packet, what we're looking for tonight is authors... We recommend to authorize the mayor to execute the attached purchase order with KCDA and the Public Works Agreement with Northwest Playground Equipment for the construction of the new Memorial Park splash pad. And so it brings me great happiness to bring this to you guys tonight because we've been talking about this for the better part of a decade. So what this agreement actually does is it pays for all the new playground equipment that we're going to be installing with our own municipal crews, and then the splash pad piece will be done by contract. And we're not planning on actually starting the construction until the spring, but there's such a backlog with these folks that we're just trying to get in their construction queue. So there's 600,000 of dollars' worth of ARPA funds budgeted in the 2023 budget to support it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Salsina? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond and a second by Councilman Burns to authorize Mayor Johnson to execute the attached purchase order of 2022 PO19 with the KCDA and the Public Works Agreement, 2022 PW04, with the Northwest Playground Equipment, Inc. for the construction of the new Memorial Park splash pad and to supply the new playground equipment in the amount of $524,974.20. That includes sales tax. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, council. Moving on to item number three, the tax parcel number P37150. Title, Approval of the Warranty Deed Excise Tax Affidavit, escrow agreement, real property voucher, and then the rental agreement. And because Mr. Freyberger is not here to present this, our attorney, Nikki Thompson, who is very familiar with this project, is going to be presenting to us. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor said, I am here tonight to present to you the final approval necessary to acquire the Tuttle property. As council is aware, this is the last piece that we need in order to create that connection between Cook and FNS Grade Road. Council had previously authorized us to go back and counter the owner of the property at 519,750. That is the amount that has been settled on. Mr. Tuttle has signed all of the necessary documents to move this thing to close. And so this evening, what we are looking for is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the necessary purchase documents for parcel number P37150. It is on for a first read, but we are looking for that motion because it is important to wrap this thing up before the end of the year. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Lavaca?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work on this, and it's definitely nice to see it closed up.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the tax parcel.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilman McGoffin to authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the purchase documents for tax parcel number P37150 of the Tuttle property. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, council, and thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to item number four. This is also Nikki, who's going to be presenting this, and it is the amending the Sejowilly Municipal Code 9A230 to update references to the RCWs relating to violations of no contact orders, Ordinance 203122. And again, this is a first read. Nikki?
This is a first read, thank you, but we are again asking for action on this one. This is a housekeeping amendment. As you'll recall, we revamped the criminal code last year in November to switch to a system that just incorporated the RCWs by reference. Since that time, there have been some changes in the RCWs relating to violations of no contact orders. There are many different kinds of no contact orders, and some of the provisions that outline the penalty for certain no contact orders have been repealed in the RCWs. So what this ordinance does that we have before you this evening is remove the repealed sections of the RCWs and add in the new sections of the RCWs that relate to violations of no contact orders. It is housekeeping. This is a change that has already taken effect in state law, which is why we're looking for action this evening. So if you have any questions, I am happy to take that.
All right. Are there any questions? If not, we're looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to... Oh, my screen jumped. I'll make the motion for 2031-22.
All right, thank you. All right. 2032-22, is that what you're looking to do there, Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
No, no worries. Just want to make sure that we have it for the record. All right, so...
Madam Mayor, did you say 2032, 22?
Oh, I'm sorry. You had it right, 2031. I'm looking ahead. Thank you, Councilman Lavaca.
You bet.
Okay. So, all right, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Owen. It's amending the Sejowilly Municipal Code 9A202230 to update references to the RCWs relating to the violations of no contact orders, Ordinance 203122. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Excellent. Motion carries. All right, on to the very last item tonight, and that is, well, before we move into executive session, that is the quasi judicial decision with the land use process updates. This is Ordinance 20322, the one that I was first thinking of, and it's a first read. There is no action required tonight, and I believe, Mr. Coleman, you are covering this?
Yeah, I can do that. It's a little bit of a hybrid between Nikki and I, but since I'm in the room, I'll do the talking. So this project started early this year or late last year when Nikki gave a heads up to the council about a lot of our processes have quasi judicial decisions go to the city council. So what that means is that the city council, under our current processes, has... It makes decisions on whether or not specific land use actions should be approved or denied, and it also brings decisions, appeals of decisions about land use actions that are made at lower levels to the city council. As Nikki pointed out during the first presentation about it, is this presents a lot of risk to the city council, not just the city, but actual to the individual members, because when things go sideways procedurally, if council does something wrong, there is actually liability on the city and sometimes on council members individually and personally, not as representatives of the city. So most cities have moved away from having councils make any sort of quasi judicial decisions and leaves the legislative actions to the city council. So what this ordinance does is it goes through the procedures parts of our land use actions, and we found all of the instances where the city council would make either a decision on a land use action, such as the example I talked about in the memo, would be right now, like if a subdivision is approved, to be approved, goes to the hearing examiner for a big public hearing, and then the hearings examiner makes a recommendation to the city council, and then we have to bring that to the city council for the city council to decide whether or not it should be approved. So this would also be streamlining the process because it would now where the hearings examiner is already having a hearing and reviewing the city code and hearing from the public and making a recommendation. It would just be the recommendation would be a decision, and, you know, the hearing examiner is a professional. They understand the law and the complexities and really delve in on the details. So that's one example. The other example is appeals of, you know, say somebody's conditionally used permit is approved and a neighbor didn't like it, they could appeal it to the city council, and that puts you in the position of having to like broker between one neighbor versus another. And there's also risk there because if you just make a decision like, oh, you know, we kind of like him more than the other guy, you know, not the council would make a decision like that, but someone might make an argument that that's what you did, and that's really uncomfortable for councils to be put in a position where somebody could argue that you're doing something wrong when you're just trying to make a decision based on what you understand it now. So that's the big part of what this is. You can see there's also a lot of other kind of housekeeping things in here. We found errors in our process about, you know, like one part will say, you know, a design review is done by the planning commission. Well, no, the planning commission does not do quasi judicial decisions either. That stays with the planning department. And so we corrected errors such as that, and you'll see there's several sections through here that are need corrections, which is why we're like, first read, we're not going to try to push you on this one. There's a lot to read and understand. A lot of changes, but the procedural is the important thing to know. These are not changing regulations for what people need to do in order to have a land use application approved. It's just the process through which an applicant will go through. So now, for the example of the subdivision process, it would be go to a public hearing with the city, with the hearings examiner, and if there was appeal, it would not come up to the city council. It would go to the court system. And this is as recommended by our city attorney and what most other jurisdictions do. Some of the other benefits of what this does is, besides streamlining and eliminating risk, it frees up the council to talk to constituents when they have concerns or just want to yell at somebody because there's a proposal that's happening that they don't like. Currently, the way our system works is because you're, as the city council, the decision maker, you can't talk to your constituents about a specific subdivision that's going to come to you for your decision. That's, you know, ex parte communication, and it's very problematic, and that's another place where the risk comes into. So it's meant to make the council much more comfortable in their decision-making process and leave the land use decisions out of the council's hands and leave it with either the hearings examiner or staff. We didn't bring anything that would have gone to council and make it administrative where the staff would make a decision. The changes are, if it went to council before, it would either go now to the Superior Court for, I believe Superior Court. Is that right, Nikki? Nod yes or no for an appeal. Or... Sorry, we didn't hear you.
Loop as they go to Superior Court?
Okay, right. So if it's appealed, it'd go to Superior Court, or your other decisions would be given to the hearings examiner. So do you have any questions?
I have a comment. It's a tedious read, and there's a lot of information in there that I could see where it would be to the benefit of the council not to have to... You would have to know this information inside and out to really make a good decision. You would have to know this information inside and out to really make a good decision regarding any kind of quasi judicial process that was happening. Yeah, it's a tedious read. I, yeah. I wanted to give you too, Nikki, an opportunity if there's something that you think that needs to be presented here that hasn't been presented yet since both you and John worked on this and are very familiar with it.
So I think John did a really good job of explaining the concerns. It's, you know, from my perspective, it's largely about risk management and really freeing up the council to continue to make those policy decisions without having to then interpret their policy decisions and apply them in, you know, that decision-making process. Because really, that is what councils are there to do, right? Is to put in place these policies and put in place a vision for the community through all of these development regulations. So, you know, I think John did a great job of explaining it. I do think that it is a, this is a really important ordinance moving forward, and I hope that everyone takes a lot of time to consider it and read it because it is dense. It's got a lot of information in it, and we're absolutely happy to assist in any way we can with explaining things and talking it out.
All right, thank you. All right, so I just want to say that this will come back to you on January 11th. So go ahead.
Quick question.
Yes.
This will not take the council out of the whole process, though. It has to come back to us if it goes to a hearing examiner and then we make the decision, right?
No, the idea is to have the hearing examiner sort of be the final stop. And then beyond that is moving into Superior Court.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I understand this is the first read for sure. I just feel like, and I agree with the risk because there's, I mean, you're asking people to make decisions upon serious topics that we don't, or not all the people have education on, for sure, I don't. However, I think in certain cases, like it's almost like having a jury of your peers or people of your peers looking at it at real time and thinking, does this make sense for this area or that area in the community? And kind of looking at it a little bit more from the person requesting that from the peers of their citizens that they elected in order to look at that. I don't know if I'm reading that correctly, but it seems like we're taking that representation out of the loop. But is that correct?
Yeah. In fact, that's adding subjective decision-making to land use decisions is what you're referring to, and that'll get you sued. So that's exactly what we're trying to avoid, saying, well, you know, we don't feel that this is appropriate here when, you know, there is land use law that says, you know, if it's an allowed use, it's an allowed use. And so if councils make decisions because they're like, eh, it just doesn't feel right, that's where, that's exactly where the risk lies, and that's some of the, correct me if I'm wrong, Nikki, but that's what we are trying to avoid, the subjectivity.
So we're absolutely trying to avoid the subjectivity. If the code, so it's the council's job to put in place the code, right? And to, and to put out its vision for the community through the code. If the code says that something is allowed, then the reality is, is that the council doesn't get to inject any subjectivity into the analysis, right? And that is where people do get into trouble. So John's accurate in what he said, that that is something we are wanting to avoid here.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So it's not necessarily like whether something will get annexed or something will be changing in the comprehensive plan. That's the code that we're writing. It's how this person wants to use it to build this or that.
Awesome.
So you actually make a really good point. Your, those two items are distinguishable here because annexation is a legislative action, right? That still absolutely comes to you. Comprehensive plan updates, that absolutely still comes to you. That's how you put in place this, your vision for the city. And those regulations are then what is interpreted later on by the hearing examiner, right? If there is something in code that is technically allowed, and maybe, you know, the community is very against it and council doesn't really like it, you know, the hearing examiner isn't going to have that emotional attachment to it and will say, you know, unfortunately, this is something that is allowed under code. And then council can come back in and say, gosh, we really didn't see that one coming, and we're going to want to change our zoning codes or our regulations to ensure that something like this doesn't happen again. But you were absolutely right, that those two, those two items still remain with council.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Again, this will come back to you January 11th. Thank you, John. That helps a lot. Thank you, Nikki. Moving on to the information items, I hope you had a chance to check those out. John, I want to thank you for the information that you provide as far as permitting and where we are in the building process and certain buildings, and that's always, that's always very informative. So thank you for providing that. We are now getting ready to move into executive session. We're going to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101I. We will be about 10 minutes. So we will be back. Thank you.
Mayor, I think we could probably do five.
You think we could do five? Perfect. Love it. Okay.
And we do have to take action at the end of the exec session.
We will need to take action at the end. Thank you. All right, it is 7:48, and we are back in session. And do we have a motion? Mr. Lavaca?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the executive, or the, what is it? Litigation in executive session.
All right, allowing our attorney to move forward with litigation?
Allowing our attorney to move forward with litigation.
All right, perfect. All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Lavaca, seconded by Mr. Burns, to allow our attorney to move forward with litigation as discussed in executive session. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. So hey, that is it. We are done. Last meeting of the year. Hard to believe, but I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas. Happy holidays. Stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you back here January 4th, 6:00 p.m. We are adjourned.